April twenty twenty-three, the time is four o'clock PM, and we have one item on our agenda, and that is to review and discuss the KLC strategic plan that's being presented to us in the draft form. And Mr. Coffey is going to lead that discussion this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I really, we've got it up on the screen, the notes that was provided that have been developed, which has turned into the draft plan. It's your all's plan, city staff made on it, as we discussed at the last meeting, the last workshop, and in talking to the city clerk, and I had to leave by the time we got to the, into the discussion, but we really didn't get a lot of, I think the, the, the plan or the document kind of starts to speak for itself, and I don't think we really got any changing comments. I think there's, it's easy to talk about a lot of the things that, that you've discussed and contemplated about it, but, but nothing that, that really warrants a lot of alteration, definitely from the staff's perspective, or additions from the staff's perspective. So, that being said, we're here with you all to discuss it again, and, and after you've had a, a week or so, to, to read it, think about it. I know Donna had at least one comment that, that she had considered, which is childcare, right? We didn't mention childcare in there, and so we'll, we'll talk about where we incorporate that here in a second. But hopefully, hopefully, you all are either really comfortable with it, or ready to provide some direction to us. The first slide was, the page one and two gets into the executive summary. Did, did you all have any comments on, on the language of that, or it felt like that it was inclusive enough for the document? Then, the purpose of the strategic plan, so I'll read that again. "The City Commission desires to create a strategic work plan to identify the City Commission's goals and budget priorities to move the city forward. The work plan will guide the mayor, commissioner, city manager, and staff to develop the city's budget. The city will continually evaluate its progress and modify the priorities as needed to accomplish its goals." And, and so that, that's the stated text. Those first two paragraphs are just, were, you know, it's, it's organizing the thought of the document. So did you all have any comments on those? It's not really a, I felt like they, they, I felt like those two paragraphs communicated the rest of the document and the goal very well, to me. So then the next page is, what does the city want to achieve? A better understanding of the collective goals of the commission, funding priorities for the next five years, which is, you know, kind of a timeframe that, that we're trying to establish, right? Budget timelines for project implementation, and the creation of this, this document. So that's what you're trying to achieve by this effort. And the Vision 2043, so we talked about doing a Vision 2050, where, where we look out, and the three basic things that, that came, when you look at that timeframe, is economic development and infrastructure, quality of life, and workforce development, housing. So for the next twenty years, those three things are basically what we think is a focus overall for the city, which is exactly the, the, the things that we do the most. By providing services, we're impacting all of those three things typically.
There are three very narrow statements, but they encompass a whole lot of different aspects of what we do, so.
Right.
Real strong.
Yeah. So then, we went through the current and ongoing projects. Comp Plan is the first one. The sewer plant's under construction, Phase One. Streetscape Downtown is, is ongoing this summer. Launched the EDA, and we want to continue to refine the reorganized EDC, and, and so that the EDC is functioning at a high level, and the EDA is functioning to complement the industrial foundation and the EDC as it was originally intended to do. The Parks Master Plan, I know that we, we, the Aquatic Center wording will change eventually, but, you know, we, we recognize we have to resolve the pool issue, and then also prioritize the immediate parks, which, the, there's two different layers to that. There, there are the short term, which is your tennis court, your pickleball, little things like horseshoe pits, and then long term, you know, the, the remaining facilities that were identified. And we, we will have a, a follow-up meeting with the Parks Group as, to complement the meeting we had before, right? So we talked about that, so they'll be back soon, and we'll continue to push those. Cemetery committal shelters, those are, Josh is working on those, Public Works building renovation. Collaborating on housing and homeless issues. The important thing there is, is the impression that the city can resolve that, that is an issue. And I think it's important to note, there has not been successful cities in that subject. It takes nonprofits, it takes private sector endeavors to, to really impact that. In the areas, anecdotally, in the communities where cities have taken a major role, largely in larger metropolitan areas, the problem tends to exacerbate. It gets worse, right? And so, so there's more to it than just city funding. Cities really don't have the resources to resolve that, so that's going to warrant a lot of talking, but, but a lot of the groups beside the city have to be involved with that, right? And I don't think that's really understood well. It is a societal issue in a lot of ways. There's drugs involved in, in, at times. There's, there's all kinds of things that are, that are tied to that.
Didn't we change the wording on that, too? Isn't he changing the wording, I think?
Yeah. Community website landing page. Making sure that we're communicating effectively with those tools, such as the internet, linking to our other agencies that are, that are tied into the city and economic development, and tourism, and recruitment of workforce, like, like the CVB, the Chamber, the County, other agencies. Melanie's taking the lead on that. BCTC, working to provide increased connectivity between local students, the education, workforce development. Make sure that the curriculum at BCTC is aligned with, with local trade skills and needs and those things. So we'll continue to, to build and foster the relationship with BCTC. New business development, such as our IRB, will continue to work with our developers. Drug use prevention and treatment was reworded. More communication and transparency across all government and community agencies. Safe sidewalks, trail, trails, securing funding. Jenny Rogers Community Center continuing to have progression towards its repopulation and full use of this building. Stormwater issues, wayfinding signage, resolve what we're doing with that, and move it forward, or bring back ideas. And, and provide and implement diversity, equity, and inclusion training. So those were our current and ongoing projects. Did you have any more that you thought about that you would like to add to that subject? That column, I guess, or that heading?
Would that be where childcare goes? And then I know Mayor wanted to add, or he said the other day, what the, I don't know, the training for us for CPR and something else.
CPR is a good one there.
And Narcan, remember he's? I don't know if you had that there.
That's a good place for those. And then, the childcare is probably, could be under short-term strategic goals. It could be workforce development, or it could be economic development.
This is with other people, obviously.
Right. To me, it probably falls under number six for the short-term strategic goals. So let's hold that. Let's read the, the, the seven strategic goals is regionalism, economic development. Let me go forward a slide. Regionalism, economic development, infrastructure, parks and rec, affordable market rate housing, workforce development, and communication and transparency. So for me, the childcare probably belongs under number six, so when we get down there, we'll, we'll discuss it there. Regionalism is the first one. You know, the big thing about regionalism is economic development, collaboration, promoting tourism into our region. Transportation is a regional issue. And then, then, you know, the we're all in it together mentality, that's an important aspect of regionalism. Understanding that, that we're three miles away from Harrisburg, and we're abutting within three miles, three other counties, or three or four miles, three other counties. Economic development, downtown revitalization, collaboration between the EDA and the EDC, new business development throughout town. Quality of life as an economic development tool, such as our parks. And continue to collaborate with Bull County and the other surrounding counties and cities. I felt like those two, regionalism and economic development, were pretty good lists to focus and, and keep us in a direction as staff. Infrastructure, the airport, you know, we, we're trying to continue to develop and maintain a, a relationship with the airport staff as they have needs. We will work with them on their, uh, funding request this year, I think is probably the best word for them. We, we've, they had their meeting last week, and so we'll follow up with their chair and staff. Expand water and sewer capacity, you know, that's twofold. One is distribution, not just treatment at the water plant. A lot of times, that's misunderstood. You have twelve million gallon a day plant, but can you get two million gallons on the north side of town? There's limited water distribution systems on the north side of town. So, so expand the distribution and, and increase sewer capacity within the system is important. Fixed stormwater issues, continue down that road of, of analyzing and review, and taking, taking advantage of, of opportunities to improve nuisance flooding, structural flooding where, where present. Streets and roads, sidewalks, sidewalk cafes is, is, Streetscape is enhancing that, but also, we want to make sure our ordinances and, and things accommodate. Remember, we talked a lot about the sound ordinance last year. Those things need to complement sidewalk cafes and, and things like that, safe sidewalks, so. Code enforcement, we, that will be realigned as we get into the summer, and Tony, Tony and I will continue to, and, and the city engineer Josh will, will continue to think about code enforcement, how that can be more effective over time. And of course, we know we've got two major issues. The railroad prevents travel east and west efficiently. We only have one major crossing from downtown, the Viaduct. And also, we have one major crossing of Clark's Run north to south, which is on Fourth Street at the Third Street merger. And so improving, improving that inter-local transportation will, will help with and ease pressure on, on downtown traffic, but it will ease economic development internally inside of the city, so that the north side of town can do business with the south side, or the east side and west side more efficiently, which is what transportation does, and, and, you know, we, we need to, to deal with the truck traffic downtown. The, the traffic nar, the curb narrowing will push some trucks out of downtown that are just trying to get through downtown. So rather than using a bypass, like I intended, there, there's quite a few still trying to drive down Third Street and make some turns, and we, hopefully, that can continue to improve, but a, a north-south corridor could, could change that, too. Parks and Rec is, uh, the next one, of course, we've, we've got all those listed. Does, do y'all have any comments on how to continue to have that conversation? Of course, we know we're going to have another workshop, where we will hopefully prioritize some of the immediate, immediate needs, and, and continue to work through that more comprehensive thing, that is Parks and Rec as an organization. But do y'all have any comments on that section, without me reading all of those?
On Parks and Rec?
Yep.
My thing is just, we need to, sooner we have the workshop, the better off we're going to be. I'm just concerned about, I guess the word is inflation? Is that the right word? Just keep sure, then we come back, we find out that we, what we thought we could afford, we can no longer afford, so we need to get a handle on something about getting something fitted and started to construct. But it's a good list.
The only thing I had on the old list was connectivity. I don't know if that was supposed to be on Parks. It said Parks and Rec connect in the parks somehow. I don't know if you can do that or not. Connectivity in the parks.
That's the pedestrian trail concept.
Okay.
It's pedestrian access.
Is that on here, you think, or is it enough?
No, I, I think it should be. I think that's a good idea.
I think, okay.
I see edit of course, yeah. Because it's really infrastructure, too, but I think, the more places we have some of this stuff, the odds are they're not going to get lost, so.
Yeah.
Not going to hurt us to have them often times.
I think Donna's, Parks and Rec collaborates with the Trails Alliance more, we'll see that connectivity. And there's quite an aggressive map now from the Trails Alliance, and there's been a lot of thought on putting those pieces together. Safe routes in from Streamland is an example of downtown. Everything should come to downtown, then you can come out like a spoke on a wheel.
Affordable and market rate housing. Create more housing options, especially for senior citizens. That's an, you know, the, this subject is not something the city does directly. A lot of these are driven by zoning, planning and zoning policies of the city, incentivized to the extent that's proper, you know, things like that. But we, we acknowledge as a community, we need to create more housing options, especially for senior citizens. We need to work together on housing and homelessness, grow in young population. The city needs townhomes and age-appropriate housing for all demographics, not just seniors. A lot of times, when we think about age-appropriate housing, we think about our seniors. Then, bring together four different housing groups that exist in the community collectively to address homelessness, emergency housing, and transitional housing with also foster care. That's important. Josh and I was talking about that earlier today.
And you're like, that four probably needs to be taken out of there, shouldn't it?
Which one?
Bring together four different?
Yeah, the, the four, the word four.
Bring together different housing groups.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because that, we don't want to leave any of the churches out working with us. It's numbers, what, five or seven?
Yeah, I was trying to think. There seems like there's something else that we could say under affordable housing that I, I, every time I read that, I have a, two or three different things that pop in my mind, but none of them turn into a bullet point.
I think he also put workforce housing at the last link, something like that.
Yeah, affordable and market rate housing, you know, too, we have opportunities to reinvest in some of our older neighborhoods. And so planning and zoning really, you know, we, we have to create a situation where that's encouraged. Going back and looking at the downtown master plan for the update, or just the, the small presentation we'll do tonight, you know, we need to figure that out. There's, there's a lot of neighborhoods that are immediately within a walking distance of downtown that, that we, we could emphasize differently, it seems, but I just don't know, you know, really how that turns into a bullet point, but we'll continue to think about that. Workforce development and retention, job opportunities for the youth. I do think with passion, it's important to teach our kids coming out of the schools that there's opportunity here. But, you know, so I know for my kids, when you're asking them what they, what do they want to do, you know, they go to the standard, you know, top occupations, engineering, or attorney, or, you know, medical, doctor, whatever. But it's important to understand that there's small businesses that need to be created to augment these industries, whether it be, you know, Commissioner Cyrus, you know, Enterprise like his, or, or, you know, any number of things. Commissioner Holland's got a small business that, that supplements our, all of our grocery stores, for example. And so I think it's important to help kids understand that it's not just being an accountant. You can be an entrepreneur. And, and so we've got to figure out how to communicate that, too, for our youth. And, and so, so a big piece of that is figuring out a way to integrate the, the youth as they're getting out of school into the community, into businesses as interns, or some relationship. And I know there's a lot of dialogue that EDC is having around that subject, and, and we'll continue to lean into that.
And, and just in our community, you get an electrician, a plumber, a roofer. There's just certain skill sets that our kids aren't being encouraged to take a look at. And unfortunately, though, these guys are coming out of a two-year degree, making fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year, and we can't find anybody in our community to do it.
Yeah.
I think we'll all be impressed when BCTC wants to get on the agenda. They ran the agenda over physical court a couple of meetings ago, and they have a plan to get into the high schools and actually come out of high school as a graduating senior with an associate's degree. So, in that light, Mary, I think that they will get exposed to all those different types of trades. Welding's another one. Or you can name your own price if you're going to weld the job.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly bullet point number two.
Okay. Other comments about that section? Okay, let's go on then to number, number seven on the list?
Communication and transparency. You know, a lot of that is just, we've got to do a good job, and, and I, I don't think you, you can communicate enough. I, I don't know how you can keep up with social media. The problem with social media, honestly, is that, that it's, it's really, it can be intentionally steered to be one-sided. By having, by throwing a subject out, and it, it being a discussion point where there's polarizing views on that subject, if the author of that, that idea on Facebook just simply removes two or three comments, the entire conversation could be tilted to their opinion. And so like, we, you've got to be careful on social media, frankly. Particularly on, on forums where that's, that's possible.
This might be a good time for me to comment, then, on, on our website, do we have the Reimagining Danville 2019 version?
We have the only version.
It's 2019.
I don't remember the exact.
I've run into two people this weekend that think that's happening now, and I said, um, I don't think so. Master plans aren't designed to happen now.
Right, right. I, I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit more tonight. But the, the downtown master plan is not a specific idea. It's, it, it is a strategic plan for a community to maintain its, its.
And one of the reasons I brought it up is in some form, we ought to try to clarify that. Both of them were negative. Senator wants to take over Danville. It's right here in this master plan, and it's like, there's to me.
Yeah, no, no, and, and, and that's, you know, we've talked a lot about that, and, and that's not the, the intent. The intent is to lean into ideas that, that maintain the economic vibrancy long-term with the, the objectives and goals listed, and we'll go through those. But, but the preamble to the whole conversation was, and, and it's, it's in the document, too. The preamble is, is that he, at, at the time, the consultant team led by Jim, Mr. Walters, was very clear that he has to talk about individual things in order to inspire you to consider, reconsider that. And so I can give you one specific example that I think's interesting, and I'll do it, I'll do it later on today, that shows you, wow, yeah, he was talking about something as an idea, but it happened over here, which is totally fine. Totally fine. So it's about reusing our old buildings as infrastructure to, and we should, we should help the community, and the document's theoretically designed to help make people think about their opportunities for their own property differently, and for how town, how downtown functions differently, too. And so we'll, we'll try to cover that a little bit more thoroughly tonight.
Well, and I think the other thing about any master plan is, is just that it's a plan. It's a roadmap that's, gets you started, can be modified and adjusted all along the way. And as far as the city is concerned, we're putting it out there. We're not going to find the money to invest and make all those changes from city government. It's about the community being involved in trying to implement and make the plan come to life.
There's very little difference between the master plan and the document that you have in front of you.
Yeah.
Right? In that, for example, one of your statements is, on workforce development, partner with public schools and BCTC to just help identify career paths. That has got so many layers to it, and so many paths you can go down, but, but that should be, if you're wanting to push the city forward, if we can, the easiest way to grow your workforce is to keep your kids at home long-term, right? And so ultimately, that's what you're saying in that sentence, in, under workforce development and retention, is you're saying job opportunities for our youth, partner with public schools for career paths in our community, right? So the goal is to keep people downtown, keep people in the community, right?
And the jobs have to be here with payment, with, I mean, with.
Right.
Salaries and benefits.
The easiest way to grow your workforce is to keep the ones you have. And so, the, the downtown master plan says the same thing, right? It's just, it, he showed it graphically more, and so I think that makes people uncomfortable because they don't, they don't remember the context. And so if you just look at an individual slide and ignore the very first slide, you're taking the document out of context. And so we'll talk about that a little bit tonight.
That's exactly what was happening, so. You know, you hate it if people just assume negative, you know, like, why don't they go put the trees down the middle of Main Street? And I go, now where'd you get that from?
Okay, let's go on.
So then the direct budget impacts is funding for our EDA, EDC. That's, that's, will, you know, be a drain on resources as you go forward, just like it always has been. The city, city's always invested in the EDC or economic development. Safety, fire department, police department renovations to help, more staffing for fire. Communications outwardly, including a, a. Communications outwardly, including a, a more developed social media presence. Melanie's doing a great job with that. I think you saw from her department presentation, she's got a lot, a lot of good ideas. Infrastructure, your engineering folks are, presented some of those, some of those costs and, and budget ranges the other day. The catch is with all those things, it, it's not all impactful in the year you're going into. And so, for example, some of those utility projects, we, we've been working with, the water plant finished in 2017. We've been working on an interconnect with Springfield since 2012, probably. And so that's been an 11-year process to get to the, the last phase where Springfield, Washington County is actually working on their side, and we have one more project between the water tower and them. So that's an 11-year project. And so a lot of times the timeframe of those projects are lost. So it won't necessarily be an 11 million dollar, 2 million dollar, or 1 million dollar project this year, but it will occur over the course of time. Parks and Rec, you know, what you all do with both operationally, quality of life is, is directly tied to how well we do with Parks and Rec operationally, and also the facilities that we have that people access. And of course, for the city, keeping our current employees, we talked about that last week, and the comprehensive land use plan. Budget timelines on the next, next page, as I'm not flipping these forward and I'm looking at my paper. Did y'all have any change that you really wanted us to do target, target date-wise for these, either of those pages?
This page is seven, eight, nine, if I got a number right.
Yep.
Timeline 23, 24, 24, 26, in the various budget years. I think they all look good to me, but I just sit back in my van key thinking that all of these things will have to change. If we just get a 5 million dollar grant, and it was in town today, we start working on some of these things ahead of time. So it's, they're flexible. But it gives us a chance to say we're targeting certain things, so.
So one of the things that we want to do is, is the whole project tracking and accountability. We, we, we are looking at ways to have, you know, a project portal on the city's website or something so that an average citizen can, can just get an update when they're curious about something. And, and two though, so that the commission would ask if you're out, can pull it up and, and demonstrate exactly, so you don't have to remember everything, because that can get confusing as well. So that's, just going back through the document, we, you know, like I said, staff really didn't have a com, a lot of comments. It's your plan. We can add language and, and adjust it the way you see fit. I don't really hear a lot of alterations to it. We flipped through it a couple of times now.
I thought we discussed a little bit that last, I'm hiring an assistant city manager that we might either scratch that or reword that.
Yeah, he, that, that is in, that will be in the final version. This is the version that he, he sent me. He actually sent me an updated one that, you know, today. I didn't print it for this.
Okay.
But we'll share that in front of next week, or in front of the meeting, the next meeting on the fourth, I think, or I think it's, whenever it is.
This was an attempt to give us a chance to have more.
The eighth, that's right.
Additions or deletions to it.
To the existing document. And, and then we'll, we'll get these minor changes in there, and then we'll send that out to you. We'll try to have it out to you tomorrow sometime.
And Earl, I want to remind the city that when we talk about the city and social media, that my first direct line is to go to our website.
Yep.
Not the first, not the Facebook page, because the website, I'm assuming is going to have factual information, not someone's opinion. When I go to some of these other things, I, I know I get some opinions, not get factual information. So we got to stress that. If you really want to know what's going on with us, go to the website. The landing page is going to be connected to the website, and that's where the real hardcore data and information should be. Facebook page ain't going to do a lot of requests, and I can put on there, you know, Jenny Holland had on a pink top today, not a white top, you know, but that's not what I want on the website. I want the factual, good information up to date as we can get it. And then the other thing is easily accessible to folks who are out there using it. And then the second thing is that we have water bills now that are coming out every month, and not everybody has access to the website at home. So we got to make sure we can use that as a way to communicate as many good things about the city that, as we can, especially about upcoming events and about, just like about, you know, flushing the, flushing the hydrants was, you know, people knew about that before they came to their neighborhood this time, and that was, that was pretty good. And then you all were being proactive, so you found out about some leaks and stuff because you were out flushing. So just the more we can do, the get the real stuff out to people, the better I think we'll be.
Did you say, did we say at the last, did the staff do this at your meeting today?
They did look at it, yeah.
Because you all were going to look at it and add to, or think what they thought the city might look like, or what they were looking at?
They, I, I think they were comfortable with just the comments in this document. I, I think, you know, there were just not a lot of additions. I mean, I, I think this is a pretty good list for where we're at. And I think you do it in two years, you look at it again, or maybe even you look, take this document back out next spring. But what, what I'd like to do is our updates align, you know, my city manager report needs to align with this a little bit more. So I'll, I'll probably reformat it. And I, and I know that when we do the project tracker, you know, there's a lot of these things that we'll, we'll try to integrate this document into some of our updates so that it's, it becomes more of a real-time thing, more of an active thing, you know, to the extent that's practical. I mean, some of those concepts, it won't be like that, but others, when that opportunity exists, we, we'll try to do that.
I just wanted to make sure they had gone through the process.
Went through it on Tuesday.
Or think they were going to last week.
Other comments or questions? You sure? You wait, sir? But I think that's good, because, you know, the more questions you ask, the more comments you make, I think the better we're going to all understand this. And as we challenge staff to work their way through it, we'll get more things done. So no other comments? Any more comments from staff?
No, sir.
If not, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment?
Move for adjournment.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.